Welcome. It's 7:05 PM on Wednesday, October 15, 2025. The Twilla City Council is meeting in a business meeting being held at Twilla City Hall in the council chambers located in 90 North Main Street in Twilla, Utah. This is also being streamed electronically on the Twilla City YouTube channel. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our second item is a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
I'm Councilman Brady and I am present. Item three is the Mayor's Youth Recognition Awards as presented by Mayor Debbie Nguyen.
Thank you, Chairman and Council. Most awesome part of the city council meeting is this wonderful opportunity, and I am honored to be able to present some awards to two exceptional young women that live in our community. We tend to have a focus sometimes because we hear so much negative that happens, and you turn on the news and that's all we hear. I always say, I wish there was a news channel that only said good stuff. Good stuff about good people doing good things because I do believe that there's more good in the world than there is negative, but we just don't hear it enough. So we take this opportunity to recognize individuals in our community that are doing good things. So tonight, we have two special awards for two students that go to Stansbury High School. And what we're going to do tonight, I'm going to ask Chief Day, there he is over there, we've got some awesome backpacks with some gifts and fun things that are donated by our businesses in our community, and we're going to give you some little prizes here as a recognition of our thanks. And I'm going to first announce our first person, and then we would ask them to come to the front, please. And our first Mayor's Youth Recognition Award goes to Andrea Villapando Cisneros. Are you here tonight? No? Andrea's not here? Well, I'm going to tell you all about Andrea. Because she's awesome. I just figured. There's got to be someone here. I'm going to tell you about Andrea. She was nominated by Sherrod Johnson from Stansbury High School. Andrea's parents are Maria Cisneros and Santiago Villapando. Andrea is always willing to help out in her class. She asks if there's anything extra she can do to help with. She has a good attitude and a fun personality. One day Andrea noticed that a new student to the school was struggling with understanding the lesson and knowing what was going on in class. She asked Mrs. Johnson if she could sit by this student and translate for him. She continues to help this student and does a great job helping him keep up with what is happening in class and helping with his classwork. That's exactly what we're looking for, is someone who will get out of their own comfort zone and help someone else when they see that there is a need. And that's very important. So we're going to make sure that we find out where Andrea's at, and we're going to bring her back another night. All right, here's our next one. Our Mayor's Youth Recognition Award goes to Riley Romney. There we go. All right, I'm going to tell you all about Riley. Riley was nominated by Sherrod Johnson from Stansbury High School. Riley's mom is Megan Romney. Riley is always asking if she can do anything extra for her teachers in class. She always has a smile on her face. She's been smiling since she walked in here. Riley always has a smile on her face and is willing to help out with anything. She is inclusive and friendly to everyone. That's what we all want to be. We all want to be friendly and include everyone. There was a student with special needs that was having a hard time with her lab group. This student was placed in Riley's group. Riley welcomed her into the lab group and is so friendly. Riley encourages her to participate with the group and finds appropriate things that this student can do for the lab. Congratulations, Riley. We all want to be like what Riley is, right? That's what we talk about all the time, is including other people and being good to other people. And the smile, even if you don't know someone, when you smile, it's like it just warms your heart, makes the world a better place. But we also know that kiddos like this that are so wonderful don't always just happen. It's how they're raised, it's the people they're around. So for you family members to be here tonight to support her, you are receiving this award too because of the great people that you are. So we want everybody to know about how great Riley is. So we first would like to go out in the rotunda, bring the council with us out into the rotunda. We're going to take a picture. We get to all get a picture with Riley, and we're all going to smile. We're all going to smile. We're going to send it to our local newspaper, and this will run in the transcript bulletin. And then also, we're going to put this on our social media pages. And this meeting tonight, as you heard before from the chairman, it's being recorded on YouTube. So all your friends can go back, and your teacher Sherrod, you can go back anytime and watch it on YouTube. You have to search Twilla City Channel. If you do just Twilla City, you're going to find a million things. But if you'll go to Twilla City Channel, you'll find this meeting really quick. So we make sure that everybody knows how wonderful you are. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's go out in the rotunda and take a picture. Maybe your family, maybe your family can hold that.
All right, we'll move on to our next item. Item four is a public comment period. This is the time for the public to address the council. We ask that you state your name into the microphone, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then there's a paper by Shiloh and Loretta that you'll have to sign. The time is now the public's.
All right. So good evening. I'm Trish Williams, and I live directly across from Twilla High School. And I do appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight because I'm here addressing a growing concern that affects not only my household, but also the safety and accessibility of my entire neighborhood. Every school day, the street in front of my home becomes an unofficial pick-up and drop-off zone, which I understand the mornings and afternoons can be hectic for parents and students. I'm a parent myself, so I get it. And I don't mind if somebody has to stop and pick up their kid in front of my house. That's not the issue here. The issue is that drivers are repeatedly parking in front of a clearly posted no parking sign, blocking driveways, and even blocking garbage cans, which prevent garbage cans getting collected. I've had multiple instances where vehicles have completely blocked my driveway. One of the worst situations happened last year when a truck with a wheelchair lift parked directly in front of my driveway for about 45 minutes. I couldn't leave my home, not even in an emergency. I did call the police office, the police station. They were able to send an officer out, which we weren't in an emergency, so it did take them about 45 minutes to get there, close to an hour, which I'm not upset about that either. But it turns out the vehicle belonged to a student that did not realize they had parked not only in front of the no parking sign, but my driveway. And while he wasn't ticketed, sadly, we've also had to where we've had to call Ace Garbage to come back and pick up our garbage cans. So I have tried to reach out, and I know he's been in meetings today with the police chief. I did speak with the school resource officers, and I did speak with Dave McCall today to just see where I could address my concerns so that we can try to see how this can get resolved. I know that some may try to say that I chose to live across from the high school, and you knew what you were getting into, right? And yes, that's very true. I did choose to live there, but this isn't just any house. This is the home my grandmother was born in and passed away in. It's the home my great-grandmother struggled to keep during the Great Depression, taking in borders just to make ends meet. It's a home that was built in 1913, long before the high school was ever there. And today, it's where the fourth and fifth generation of the family still live. So when I speak tonight, it's not just about parking, it's about respect for the families and history that make Twilla what it is. So thank you.
Hey, Trish, just make sure you sign this paper by Shiloh. It's okay. Seeing no one else come forward, I will close the public comment period. At the beginning, I felt to recognize that we have a scout group here, so we always love to see the scouts out there, and thanks for joining us tonight. We'll move on to our next item, which is item five. It's a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2025-27. In ordinance of the Twilla City Council amending Twilla City Code Section 4-8-2 regarding road construction standards for local streets. This is presented by Paul Hanson, the City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Occasionally, in going through the ordinance and as we deal with development, we find pieces of ordinance that still need to be amended to correct something in the past. Two years ago, by Resolution 2321, 2023-21, the state mandate, or the city came into compliance with a federal-state mandate that said that pavement widths for local-class streets could not exceed 32 foot. Our prior standard was 34. So two years ago, we made that revision. We thought we had caught all places, but we found another paragraph that still contained the 34-foot. It's within Title IV, Chapter 8, Sub 2, Street Design, Subparagraph 15, which refers to private streets. And what we're proposing to do with this ordinance is to modify the street width down to 32-foot as being a standard private street. But it also allows a provision that would be consistent with what the council has done with residential service special district that was done for the Overlake area, the Perry Compass Point development, or perhaps a planned unit development or other special. So proposing that the language be modified, and you have a copy of this in your packet, the red highlights the new language. It would read as follows. Private streets may not be reduced in width narrower than 32 feet of asphalt with curb and gutter on each side unless approved otherwise, this is the new part that we're proposing to add, unless approved otherwise through a city council-approved Planned Unit Development, PUD, a residential special district, RSD, or other formal Twilla City Council action. In no case shall the pavement width of a private street be less than allowed by the International Fire Code and Twilla City Code, Chapter 3, Fire Code. That's our proposal, to help provide a basis and a guideline, and also provide you as the council a little more flexibility to consider special cases where maybe less than 32 feet is appropriate, just to kind of standardize our codes and going through that. This would also break that long paragraph into three distinct paragraphs, just for readability and simplicity of use and interpretation. That's our request, and that's what this resolution would do. Any questions?
What is the International Fire Code or the Twilla City Code standard?
International Fire Code has widths based on requirements such as what is the uses that are along the road? Are you accessing a fire hydrant or not? If you're accessing a fire hydrant, then the width pavement has to be no narrower than 26 feet. And there's also provisions that limit parking. Again, it can become quite specific based on the use. But the general requirement is if I'm accessing a fire hydrant, I need at least 26 feet. If I'm stretching from a hydrant, then the width can reduce down to 20 feet in some places other, but it comes to the discretion of the fire marshal, which is allowed in that Twilla City Fire Code, Chapter 3.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Thanks, Paul. This item has a public hearing, so we invite the public to address the council. We ask that you state your name into the mic, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then sign the paper by Shiloh. The time is now the public's. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve ordinance 2025-27 amending Twilla City Code Section 4-8-2 regarding road construction standards for local streets.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilwoman Goachis. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item six is a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2025-28. In ordinance of Twilla City amending the zoning map pertaining to the Twilla Business Park Zoning District by reassigning the land use sections of the TBP zoning sections map affecting approximately 285.1 acres of property located at approximately 1,100 West and 700 South. This is presented by John Perez, the Economic Development Director.
Good evening, council. So yes, as Chairman Brady just mentioned, this is for the business park zoning map specifically. The actual zoning for the business park is not technically changing any of the different requirements or things that meet or don't meet code. That's not being changed, just the overall map. So you will see in the staff report, that went before the Planning Commission on September 24th, and it was recommended for your approval. And within there, you'll see kind of an analysis section, and it goes over a summary of the proposed changes to the business park. So this new map really takes into consideration future and, you know, present infrastructure improvement needs, property boundary adjustments, and then rail spur elimination. And the previous map was done in 2023, and the mayor was here, obviously, at that time, and they had worked with Union Pacific Rail to see and did kind of a cost in Savage as well, and did kind of a cost analysis on the rail, and they determined that it really wasn't feasible for rail to be there. Even if you had such a large user, it still was kind of deemed not financially sound. And then going back to the property boundary adjustments, the previous map was really kind of, it would just say like, you know, lot number, whatever the case may be, and it was just kind of almost like a gerrymandered line all over the place, right? It didn't really make sense, kind of weird, odd shapes. But this really takes into consideration actual ownership of parcels within the area. And it's not, you know, to say that, you know, ownership won't change, you know, myself and the mayor and the RDA chair and Councilmember McCall, we meet with business owners and property owners for the area, and, you know, just in the next couple of weeks, I'm meeting with some property owners to discuss potential kind of land swaps and ways that we can make the RDA land more appealing when companies do come in and it suits their needs better for acreage needed and things like that. And then you'll also see in Exhibit B, it just shows the actual breakdown of the business park zoning map. So you'll see the retail office, the light industrial, and then the heavy industrial. So just a little bit of change on the retail office area, and then you'll also see it's proposed for a collector road that wouldn't be a thoroughfare, but it would give some people kind of double frontage access. And then you'll see that heavy industrial stays west of the 1,200 West alignment, and then the light industrial, for the most part, stays west of 1,100 West. And some people say, oh, you know, what does light industrial exactly look like? And what's there now with Leitner Poma? That really serves as a very proper example of what light industrial can look like and how it really is not, you know, obtrusive to, you know, the nearby neighborhoods and subdivisions. And you can see a breakdown of the total of the retail office acreage, potential building square footage, and then light and heavy industrial acreage as well. This zoning map also takes into consideration the potential for the future Mid Valley Highway alignment. And obviously, as, you know, Councilwoman Manzio and Mayor Nguyen have been on, you know, these monthly UDOT meetings for the past two years, they will very much so tell you that this is not set in stone. Obviously, there's going to be another, you know, environmental study once the time comes when the funding arrives, right? So obviously, things will shift, and, you know, UDOT does not want to have to buy up things, you know, they have a limited budget as well. So, you know, I am confident that they will do what's best for, you know, businesses in the area. And then also in Exhibit C, you'll see this is an engineering review that was taken into consideration on this zoning map, and it shows the gradage, too. And that's something I think people maybe perhaps don't realize is there is like a, I think it's a three, it mentions in here, I believe, a 3.6% grade in the business park. And you kind of say, well, what does that mean, right? But, you know, Jamie would know from a public work standpoint that depending on where you put sewer, then sewer lift stations are either needed or not needed, and for water pumps are needed and things like that. So this really does a very, you know, a quite well job of taking into consideration all those engineering concepts as well. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
I do have a couple of questions. I believe, I'm not for sure, it says site plan concept B4. It shows roads, it says 66 row. Are those established roads? Or are those just for future?
No. Those are just future, yeah, just future planned roads that, you know, according to engineering review would look, would serve the area well.
And then also in site plan concept B4, and it shows the road alignment, and I understand that there will be studies for future, but I just am wondering why they don't match the Twilla proposed alignment and the UDOT proposed alignment. It's very, just a small variation, just wondering.
Yeah, and I believe, so I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it doesn't have something to do with the wellhouse that's there, that they have it kind of going right over it, and, you know, that obviously can't happen. So they'll do another environmental study when the time comes, and I think, I think we kind of agreed that once they do that, it would be more in line with ours. But the thing is, too, that's already the existing Twilla Boulevard, so if we extend it, you know, one could also maybe assume that then they would just, you know, buy that right away from us instead of, you know, doing, you know, going through and doing something else. And somebody can correct me if I'm wrong.
But that's the current UDOT Mid Valley Highway.
Current, current. But it's changed. How many times have they changed it, Mayor? Four or five times?
So when they really do that alignment, too, they say they can move it 100 feet either way. When we originally, again, drew the lines, we wanted to connect Twilla Boulevard and 700 South so that we can get it all the way out to SR 36. And even, I mean, that's just a drawing. Depending on what businesses want to locate here, and how much property they need, those roads can move. But we felt like getting something at least from the end of Twilla Boulevard now out through the end of the depot will help us. So before that's ever built, we'll make sure it's in a place and built to a standard that if that's where UDOT chooses to put the road, and we'll follow their alignment as close as we can. And at the south end, we have to match because we've got to come out where we now have an easement through the depot property. So that's one that can't change on that south area. It has to, it has to meet at that place, Mid Valley and our road. So that's why you see it align at the very end. But even some other sections, we could align it a little different, but we're not going to let them build a highway over our wellhouse. And they won't. They'll move it to one side or the other.
And that easement through the depot, you know, I think it should be noted, too, Shiloh Baker, when she was the mayor's assistant, and Councilwoman Manzio and Mayor Nguyen meeting every month for almost two years to get that done. So, you know, it sounds so simple, but, you know, it's not. There's a big process to it.
But it's done. It is done. We have the right of way. Twilla City has the right of way easement through UDOT to put that road in, and we're working on it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. This item also has a public hearing, so we invite the public to address the council. We ask that you state your name into the mic, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then sign the paper by Shiloh. The time is now the public's. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-28, an ordinance of Twilla City amending the zoning map pertaining to the Twilla Business Park Zoning District by reassigning the land use sections of the TBP zone sections map affecting approximately 285.1 acres of property located at approximately 1,100 West and 700 South.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goachis and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item seven is an economic development first quarter update presented by John Perez, the Economic Development Director.
All right. So this is first quarter economic development, so this is July 1 through September 30. So you might say, oh, you know, something happened last week, it's not on here, that'll be on the next quarter's update. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So in case you missed it, in case you missed the excitement, we were featured on the Sunday edition with Dini Wimmer on KSL. Business is booming in Twilla. Mayor Nguyen was also on that interview as well, so if you haven't seen that, give it a watch. Everybody at home, if you haven't seen it, give it a watch. It really presents us in a very positive light. It highlights the exciting economic development things that are occurring. So very exciting. Next slide. So this just goes over some of the grand openings slash ribbon cuttings that you could say have occurred over the past quarter. So you have Chili's, U-Haul, TJ Maxx, Sierra, Five Below, Hobby Lobby, Bath &amp; Body Works, the food station Summit Healthcare, and then also Central State's Manufacturing. I almost needed a second slide because that's how much is going on, right? Next slide. And then this next one are the vacancy rates. So you'll see the change, percent change from Q4 to Q1. So you see retail went up just a little bit, but that's really because these new retail centers are coming online, and now they're being marketed. Basically, they're being marketed. centers are coming online and now they're being marketed basically on kind of the commercial version of Zillow, right? So now that those new listings are hitting the market, you'll see that it went up just slightly. Office remains at 0% and you'll see any of those new office buildings that are coming in along 400 North and 2400 North. You know, it's like, it's a ribbon cutting when the building is done, right? So, you know, immediately. And then you'll see industrial went up just a little bit. And I also think that has to do with the business that was in the Peterson Industrial Depot and some of those listings are starting to hit the market, but still very low, very healthy. And then you'll see this is the first time on the hospitality occupancy rate, you'll see that it's at 76.3% and that's almost 10% higher than the previous quarter. And it's important to note, this is the first quarter that that Home Two Suites by Hilton is being incorporated into that number. So that tells you they're doing quite well because, you know, average for that occupancy rate is about 63%. And that's not just, you know, a Twilla average, but really kind of a nationwide average of hotels, um, in suburban areas. So to be 10% over that tells you we're doing very well. And another thing too, anybody that really tells you or asks somebody, you know, how's economic development doing? This really tells you and paints a data-driven answer, right? You know, somebody can say, oh, I don't think Twilla is doing very well, which would be, you know, completely unfounded, but to say we're doing quite well, this tells you we're doing very well. And I had a meeting today with a representative from EDC Utah and these specific numbers come from CoStar and it's a subscription-based, uh, fee that EDC Utah pays. And he said, John, you are the only municipality in the entire state that has ever requested these numbers, right? And I think that's really commendable because like I said, this isn't arguing, this is not an arguable thing. This tells you that we're doing well, that's proof. And then this lead generating pipeline, this tells you the number of contacts made, restaurant for retail hospitality, two, four RFIs were submitted and we had one RFI visit. And we'll dig into that a little bit more shortly. And then the next slide basically shows the job creation over the past four years in the business park and then the Peterson Industrial Depot. And if you sum everything up, it's around 650 new jobs. So you'll see Central States Manufacturing that just opened a couple of weeks ago, 90 new jobs. Leitner Poma's totals 236 new jobs. And that's because it's really not just Leitner Poma, it's Skytrack, it's Pre-North, the list goes on. So they have a few more organizations working under their umbrella, so that kind of sums everything up. Carvana that came, that brought 200 new jobs. And then formerly, you know, known as GeoFortis, which is now Ash Grove Cement, that brought approximately 23 new jobs. And then Plastics Ingenuity, 65 new jobs. And I must say, I just recently went on a tour of Plastics Ingenuity with the representative from the governor's office of economic opportunity. And it, they said they were completely fully staffed and they had one person moved to another area, so they were just hiring for one job. So that really is a testimonial, that tells you how well these businesses are doing. And you might say, oh, you know, what's kind of the range? But everybody has HR, everybody has finance, everybody has people on the ground, technicians and things like that. So it's not to say this is just a manufacturing or industrial operation, there's many other facets to it. So that really speaks to, you know, a, a array of job offerings. And you talk to some of these people and, you know, $30 to $34 an hour, that's a $70,000 a year job. So we're talking about good paying jobs. And then this next one, this goes a little bit more into the RFI details. This is, uh, for EDC Utah, so we submitted two RFIs. We're still in the third stage evaluation for an RFI that was submitted. Oh, it should, that's a typo, it should say FY '25, not '15. And then fourth stage evaluation for RFI submitted in Q1 FY '25. So these are still ongoing, uh, you know, some of these, uh, both of these actually have came twice this year. And actually, one of them has came three times this year. So, you know, it's very much so still a fluid situation. And I think, uh, you know, everybody has been very involved. We've had council members, we've had, you know, the city engineer, the public works director, the community development director. It's very much so a team effort, you know, they look at different things every time they come, they look at the secondary water quality, they look at, you know, roads, they look, whatever, the list goes on. They're always looking at something different, so it does take time. And then we hosted one site visits, visit in this quarter, we had one RFI win. And then just to kind of give you an FY '25 summary, we hosted 11 site visits, FY '24 to '25. So that's basically a site visit every single month, right? So that's good. And, you know, somebody might say, well, there could be more, you know, there were 32 RFIs that went out in FY '25, but we're not a fit for every single one of them, right? In some cases, we don't have the size they need, we don't have a mega site that they might need, we don't have, maybe we don't meet the water requirement. So there's reasons that we're not, you know, getting a visit for every single one. Next one. And then this goes into that RFI win for EDC Utah, it's called Project Seven Up, they are locating in PID. It's 10 very high wage jobs and they're really giving back to the community. Uh, and when I say the community, maybe not so much Twilla City, but Twilla County and the fact that they will be working with the Bonneville Salt Flats Racing Area to where they'll actually be able, they're working with, um, lithium and salt to where they'll actually be able to extract some salt and put it back on to the race floor that apparently is disintegrating or getting smaller on the salt flat. So that's kind of a tourist destination for the county. So to see them, you know, being able to give back to that, that's something that's great. You know, you hope, maybe they're going there and then they're coming to eat at Chili's and staying at the Home Two Suites when they go there, right? So that's great. And I can't technically say the name of the company just yet because they haven't put out a press release. Um, but very, a unique setup. And somebody might say, you know, they visited just in this quarter and they also are working on a lease with PID now. So it's not, you know, one of these long, year-long projects that we've been working on, it would be, you know, so man, how exciting, right? But, you know, it was a quick win, it was a natural fit and that's why it was so quick. And then governor's office of economic opportunity, we submitted two RFIs, we're still in the second stage evaluation on one RFI that was submitted in FY '25. And then one RFI win, which we'll go into on the next slide. So this is with JB Hunt. And you'll see, it's kind of hard to read on here, but you can go online and see it, the press release that the governor's office of economic opportunity put out on that. And that brings 95 jobs, an average remuneration of over 85,000 annually. So there you go, look at that, good paying jobs, a large number. They'll be working a lot with Central States as well, and that's JB Hunt. And then this next one, to give you a little update on the RDA and how they're creating new jobs, Founder's Point, if you add everything up, it's approximately 425 new jobs. And you can see that broken down and there's still more to come, Cafe Zupa, Zao, and then the other one that's not on there, and I forgot to list is that Seven Brews Coffee, which I don't know if anybody knows what that is, but there's one by BYU. And I'm telling you, this place aligned down the street, so it must be good. And then just to give a little shout out to Chili's that opened in this quarter as well, they had the highest sales out of any grand opening in the state of Utah and the second highest sales out of all grand openings nationwide, beat only by a location in the Pennsylvania locate, Pennsylvania, or excuse me, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania area, uh, beat by only $2,000 in sales. And people are taking notice, people are talking about it. You know, we've had meetings with other, uh, restaurant chains and people know, they talk, everybody talks, Darden talks to Brinker, everybody talks. So people are talking about this and it's great. And then a little update further north to the peak, and I didn't have, I just kind of got word last night, so it wasn't on here, uh, but Smith's is officially opening December 6th, which is a Saturday at 7:30 AM. So mark your calendar, that's going to be a big day here, right? Just in time for the holidays, uh, so that's very exciting. And then you'll see, um, on this list, a nail spa has been added. And then also the second Little Caesar's for Twilla City, that's also been added. Uh, but otherwise, uh, nothing new since the last update. Um, they're still working on more, so, you know, I anticipate that that will change. And then we just went over the business park, we just went over that concept, the updated conceptual map and that engineering review, so that's exciting. And then that strategic plan, I just actually met with him today and that was another item that was discussed on more of the design element of the strategic plan. So hopefully we can have that all done within the next couple of months. And then the Broadway property, I think everybody's aware that, you know, the, the building was removed, the fencing was removed. And today I actually just received an email from the State's Brownfield Program, so we're just awaiting a couple more final items. Um, and from, for the most part, it looks far better, um, than what, you know, was once assumed. This one is rather exciting, this is kind of a, the responses that were received from the Take Pride Twilla Day that was done in conjunction. We had a, uh, the Broadway closed off in a little block party, if that's the right expression. Uh, and there were about 70 responses, um, from respondents that came through the area. And what that basically tells you, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, those are the different lots within the area. And then you'll see 1, 2, 3 for each of those lots, and those are the top three responses, um, that were given to what people thought would go well in each particular parcel, right? So obviously you see splash pad up there a lot, you see restaurants, you see, um, you know, some mixed use. So that just, you know, tells us, you know, when we're talking to developers, which we are, you know, what people would like to see, you know, what could the mix be, does, is there more parking that's needed? Uh, so the list kind of goes on, but that just kind of gives you an example. And that's just 70 respondents. Uh, but I think even if, you know, you kind of compare the strategic plan responses that were nearly 700, and even though this was only 70, you really see, if you call it, you know, the word art or whatever, to where the words, you know, get bigger based on responses, you see a lot of similar, um, responses for this area, even, even at you do, even what you saw for the city level responses as well. And then this next one, the Twilla City Historic Main Street, so you saw the way finding signs were completed and then also the Main Street corridor light poles were completed. And, you know, how ironic, we saw one go down, but, you know, it's been fixed, so, uh, that's exciting. And then they were not only done on Main Street, they were also done on Vine Street as well. Uh, and then just this past month, we had the Utah Main Street Annual Update, and that's just presenting some of our financial statistics and then business investment statistics, um, to stay accredited as a tier two, uh, Utah Main Street community. And then this is just a little social media update, the Facebook page was just under a percent in increase in visits. The Instagram page did quite well, 20% increase in views and just over 15% increase in visits. And the LinkedIn page, this is where the fire was at, okay? Almost 500% increase in reactions and almost 300% increase in impressions. And a lot of that can really be attributed to the wins we're having, the ribbon cuttings, right? People are sharing, people are talking about it, people are reposting. So that really, you know, speaks to why the LinkedIn is doing so well. And then this is exciting, right? So this is a, a corridor preservation grant fund, um, that we are receiving from the county. This, we're receiving just over 635,000. This is for roadway improvement maintenance, um, in the PID area and then also along the 1,000 North Corridor. Um, so that's exciting. Any questions?
I always love your excitement. I think that's why we're getting businesses out.
Right.
You're going out and finding them.
Go get them.
I love it, yeah. Any other questions or comments?
That's great. Let's have a couple.
Yeah, please.
And I, I echo what you say, that your enthusiasm is contagious, it's, it's exciting. 650 new jobs. And, you know, the, the great thing about this is that some of these businesses are partnering, partnering with our technical college.
Right.
And, and that's really nice to have custom fit training at our colleges to be able to supply these jobs. They're high, high paying jobs. Um, Central States is even an employee-owned company and so they receive share, you know, profit share. This is exciting, you know, we, we have a lot of new jobs at Founder's Point, you said 425.
Yeah. And Smith's alone is 200 new jobs. And somebody might say, oh, you know, maybe a cashier doesn't make that much, but everybody's at a different stage in life. People that are an assistant store manager make 50 to 60,000. People that are a general manager make between 70 and 100,000. So those are good paying jobs.
This is exciting.
Yeah.
And we appreciate your hard work and efforts.
Thank you.
This is great. For sure.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
John is awesome. To have him in our office every day, and that, that's the enthusiasm, that's every day. Uh, so it's hard to keep up with him sometimes, but, but, you know, it, it, I, I kind of feel like sometimes we're a broken record, that we just keep saying, we're bringing jobs, we're bringing jobs, we're bringing jobs, we, we're bringing jobs. And then I hear that we don't have any jobs. It's like, oh, come on, listen to us. And, and Central States, Melody, you just mentioned that. Central States wants to hire an employee that will stay and retire. They don't want to keep retraining people. So they are an employee-owned company and they are hiring people to stay with them for 20 to 30 years and retire and be wealthy when they retire and be able to retire. And they are going to keep expanding. Uh, they're not just building the buildings, they're doing the overhead doors also, and they will keep expanding. It's, it's just phenomenal of what's happening. So drive on the outskirts of town and see how great we're doing. It's, it's good stuff, so thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next item. Item eight is Resolution 2025-80, a resolution of the Twilla City Council approving and ratifying an agreement with Speakman's Concrete Service LLC for the Twilla Library Stamped Concrete Project East, presented by Chase Randall, the library director.
Good evening, council. Um, so I'm coming for you today, we're, this is for the east side of the library, so the east park strip, we had, already did the stamped concrete in the, um, west parking, uh, park strip, which is where we have the Buffalo. And then hopefully this week, maybe next week, we're going to have a couple picnic tables there as well, so people can be next to the Buffalo, be under the trees and, um, just be able to enjoy the, the library grounds. And this is our little part that we have to play as well as the library to be saving water as, so that we can have water for all these new developments and all the new businesses. Um, so this stamped concrete will match that same color of the, of the stamped concrete that we have. And then I would also add that we just finished the other project that I was, um, in front of you, um, a couple of weeks ago of the north side of the, of the library, they just finished that zero escaping project and we left the drip lines in place for those trees that we'll plant. And then this stamped concrete project will keep, the, the trees that are currently there, we'll keep those and we'll just leave a spot where we'll put rock around them, just like we did on the west side. Um, so Speakman was the, the lowest responsible responsive bidder, um, and they've done great work with the city in the past, so that's who we've decided to, to go with tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
It's looking good over there.
Yeah, it looks awesome. I drove by on Tuesday and it looks really nice, so I'm excited for the concrete and I think it's great that we're saving water too.
Saving water, saving money over in, in the long run. And then just, I want to ensure that we have a nice, beautiful library too. So you can do all three.
All right.
It looks great. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion, we approve Resolution 2025-80, a resolution of Twilla City Council approving and ratifying an agreement with Speakman Concrete Services LLC for the Twilla Library Stamped Concrete Project East.
Last second. With a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilman Hanson, we'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gochis.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes 5-0.
Chairman.
Yeah.
Can I interrupt you again one more time? I got to give kudos to Chase. Yeah, you know, Chase in the past year, his number one priority is the library, making sure that people are enjoying their, their visit. It's great keeping the employees, um, happy and keeping things moving down there. And, and then when I think that's not enough, he's in my office saying, I found a way to save some more money. And, and I'm not kidding, it is, it is a monthly, if not more often, that he's in my office saying, if we make this change, I can save money. He has saved thousands of dollars. Now he's after all of making sure that we've, we, we're not watering grass that we don't use, it just looked nice. But he's now doing all these improvements to save water and still make it a great environment down at the library. down at the library, so I just want to give kudos to him. He's awesome, and I appreciate him very much.
Thank you. Item 9 is Resolution 2025-81, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving an agreement change order number five with Broken Arrow Construction for England Acres Park Phase Three, presented by Darwin Cook, the Parks and Recreation Director.
Okay, uh, I need to give a little history, but first of all, kudos to John's presentation, because, uh, all those businesses, as Marissa and I get to a lot, mostly deal with, is with the par tax. So, uh, it will very well, uh, help with that, uh, increase in our par tax revenue. Uh, so very excited about all those businesses to come into Tuilla City. Uh, so on a part, this, this, this resolution that I'm, uh, bringing for you actually isn't a par tax project, so this, uh, England Acres has been a park impact fee project. So, uh, this project, uh, Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three have all been paid out of the park impact fee prod, or fund. Um, so add a little history on this part of Phase Three. So this is the last phase and final phase of England Acres construction. Uh, when the mayor and I started planning this phase to move into it and making sure that we could pull this last and final phase off, uh, one of the things that we decided to do, uh, to save, uh, a little bit of money was not, uh, having ground engineering done on the entire area of Phase Three. The purpose behind this was, is that we really only had a, that needed ground engineering done was, uh, the, the soccer field, the parking lot, and the, uh, ninja and basketball court. Uh, the rest of it, we were already constrained by an existing sidewalk that went the perimeter of the property. Uh, we didn't have any intentions of changing that or, uh, reel, doing elevation change on that sidewalk, so we chose to only do those three areas. That's the area that our engineer focused on to give us quantities. Uh, in that process, uh, we came up with a discrepancy for our sod, and in July, this was discovered in, uh, July when they did that first section, so if you can put up this line. So, as you look at this slide, the, the part that's at the very top of your screen was the sod that they did on July 14th. Uh, that's actually where we first noticed a discrepancy in the quantity for the sod, um, because the engineer actually only had us quantities up to where the soccer field was, because that's actually what we engineered to the 2% grade. Once we, once we got that engineered to that 2% grade, the rest of it just, uh, we did field-fit to the existing sidewalk. Um, the contractor brought that to my attention at that time, but at the time, we also weren't 100% positive on the, the quantities for that lower section that they just barely sodded where it's, uh, 98,825, or 29 square feet, due to the fact that we did alter a little bit with the detention basin and the location. We had to spread out, or move the location of the basketball court and the ninja course a little bit. Uh, at that time, we already had the landscaper onsite doing irrigation, so they just proceeded, uh, until we could get a final count, uh, a quantity count of that square footage. Um, just so you know, in the original contract that we did have with Broken Arrow for Phase Three, uh, they allowed for 228,850 square feet of concrete, or of sod, sorry, of turf. Uh, after we were done, uh, as you can tell, we ended up with 287,300 square feet of sod. Um, this is a quantity adjustment. It was, they, they did not change the price. They did not change anything with both the irrigation and the sod, so, uh, the main portion of this change order is that portion. I just kind of wanted to give you that history of that. So the change order number five is for 167,1619. Um, part of that, 135,000 of it is for that sod addition. Uh, 6,000 is for some additional sidewalk that, uh, on some of the shades that we put in, part of it was to eliminate grass that's not going to be used because it's a weird corner, so we, we changed it from, uh, sod to, to sidewalk, so that's what that sidewalk is. They also, as many of you, if you've been there, uh, we finally have completed the crossing at Seventh Street from the Devil's Ditch Trail or the, the England Acres Trail over into the park. Uh, one of the features that we always wanted to add was the ADA access, uh, one for easy crossing for obviously ADA purpose, but also for bikes and scooters and stuff to cross there as well. And then we had, we had to add another ADA ramp over in the parking lot because of the utility building. Uh, and then lastly, just, uh, uh, in the, the, the part of our plan was the, um, a dog park. We ended up moving that to a different location so that, as, as the park has been being used, and as we've gone through the building phase, we decided that part over on the, that, right on 1,000 North, um, we decided we wanted to preserve that more. The dog park was originally going to be over there. We decided we wanted to preserve that more for a play area, because we noticed that when flag football or soccer's there, a lot of the other green space is actually just being taken up and being used. So, uh, you'll, you'll see people over there playing catch, playing, uh, flying, uh, kites, uh, just doing other activities as families. We decided to preserve that, that area for that a little bit, and we moved the dog park down. It just initiated in doing that that we had to add some curbing for the, the fence around that small dog park that's, uh, right at the bottom of your screen there. Um, so that is, I would like to say that when the mayor and I was putting the budget together for this new year, we did, we did know that this, this quantity change was, was coming, so we did, we did put some into the new budget for this, this part of this project. We, um, I think the, the project, the whole project, uh, bun, uh, budget itself will be probably okay. Uh, we may have to bring back at some point a minor adjustment because of the, uh, backflow preventer that we had to add due to, uh, in, well, part of it was just because not, not taking the water across the ditch and getting the permit from FEMA to do that, so.
How many soccer fields, or I guess they can be anything. There could be soccer field, but how much did we add? It seems like we doubled.
There's three, there's three there now. So there's the, the original one, we added one last year, and we've added another one.
Okay, good. I know that's always, that's been something that comes up.
And they're multi, multi-use fields, so they'll be used for, I mean, pretty much anything. Uh, as, if any of you have been there, the ninja course is open, uh, and so are the basketball courts.
They're well-used.
And they are very well-used. Uh, I've very, I've been very, very impressed with the play on the basketball court. Uh, there's been pickup games there with kids playing, uh, and, and the ninja course is just crazy. That's all I can say.
It looks awesome. I'm so excited for it, so. Are there any other questions or comments?
Are you paying for it?
What's that?
How you paying for it? You said a hu, you had 134,000.
Park impact, so part of the budget for this year in the, it park impact project, uh, that has already been budgeted to the Phase Three project, so.
All right.
Are we going to have a ribbon cutting?
We are. We are planning that towards, before the, before November, so at the end of this month, we're going to do it. There'll be a few things that won't be completed at that time, but the majority use of the park is actually just about there. We're waiting for some signage to show up, and then everything can be open. There'll just be some corners and some rock landscaping that we want to get done. Uh, so, but yeah, before the end of the month, we want to have that ribbon cutting.
So when you do the ribbon cutting, are you going to have, um, um, first responders there on standby?
For when you try the ninja course?
No, because we already made, we already, we already made an agreement that, um, Councilman Brady is going to try.
Justin's going to, yeah, Justin's going to probably be over there by Achilles.
I am going to be on one of the benches watching, that's, but I want to make sure we got first responders there just in case.
No, it's, it's, it's being well-used already. Uh, yeah, it's a great course, and it's, it's good to see, uh, people excited about it, because every day, there's people there trying it out, and, uh, there's a few of them I can make it through. Not too many of the upper-body strength ones, because it does take a lot of upper-body strength, a lot, and hand grip. It takes a lot of hand grip, so.
So before you vote, Darwin and I have talked. I mean, we've spent hours and hours and hours on this park. Um, but it's his vision. All I did was say, great idea, great idea. It was his idea. He worked with Broken Arrow, our contractor, very well. His team worked to give some input, but I will tell you again, there's your leader that has seen the vision of what this can be and how excited that the public is, and so it's kudos to him for, for his leadership and his vision of what this was, and at the end of the day, promises made, promises kept. We got this park done.
I should, just for the public, too, I should say, so the ninja course didn't just happen. Like, we, we seriously, and Chief Dave's there, so, so, so we are seriously, we seriously wanted a location that we can tell teenagers that, hey, we have a place for you to go and recreate. Uh, as most people know, we do not own a playground that is not, uh, is not designed or anything for anybody older than 12 years old. Uh, every playground that is in our infrastructure is a five-to-12-year-old playground. Now, some of the playgrounds have features for infants or for younger, but every playground that's in our park system is a five-to-12-year-old playground. Uh, the reason, and they're designed that way, and they do have risk. They are not risk-free play. They're designed that way because that is the, they're designed at a level of risk-taking for a five-to-12-year-old. Nothing's on there that is going to challenge to give them an opportunity to make a choice of risk that's above their capability, until now. Uh, we do have the ninja course. The ninja course is for 14 years and older. It is designed for the capability and the mental capability of somebody to make a greater risk decision. And, uh, our goal is just to give them a place, it's lighted. Uh, we have not authorized the turning on of the lights yet. We'll do that after the ribbon cutting, but, uh, the, it is designed so that they can make a greater risk choice, and, and so it's designed for that age group, all the way up to adult, of course, because it is designed for adults. But that was our goal. Like, we want to have a place to tell teenagers and a place for, not to tell them, but to, to offer them, something for them to go do in a park, in a public setting, that is designed for their age. So, and the same, same with the basketball court. The basketball court is lighted as well, because teenagers are out a little bit later than five-to-12-year-olds.
Well, it turned out great.
I hope your twi, fuck, 12-year-olds aren't out past nine.
No promises made.
They probably will, is that what you're saying?
No promises made. All right, any other questions or comments?
It's just awesome.
It is.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We approve Resolution 2025-81. That's for Resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving an agreement change order with number five with Broken Arrow Construction for England Acres Park Phase Three.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Thanks, Darwin. Item 10 is Resolution 2025-82, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving an agreement with Speakman's Concrete Services for the installation of a sidewalk on 200 West between 500 North and, and 600 North, presented by Jamie Grandprey, the Public Works Director.
Good evening again. This is a resolution for a sidewalk on the west side of 200 West between 5th North and 6th North. Uh, as you're aware, we recently just completed a road widening project across this section of road, and was asked to look at the possibility of putting a sidewalk in, as the sidewalk wasn't initially in, uh, in, in the first agreement that was with our original contractor. Uh, we did ask to get quotes from the contractor we used for, uh, the 200 West Road Widening Project and, and got his proposal, which was quite high, and so we looked at a couple, other, uh, a couple other quotes. We gained a couple other quotes, just to see if his price was in line, or if, uh, we could get it a little cheaper. And so we did get three quotes, uh, one for 49,395, one for 77,420, and one for 83,522, 20, and 25 cents. And so I'm bringing to you this evening a proposal that we go with Speakman's Concrete Services in the amount of 49,395 dollars, and with a contingency of 4,940, uh, just in case if we need that, uh, to get the sidewalk installed. We're trying to push and get the sidewalk installed before the weather changes too much, and so we are trying to get that done this year if we can.
Great.
I can answer any questions, if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments?
It's much needed.
Be glad to have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's needed right there, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-82, approving an agreement with Speakman's Concrete Services for the installation of a sidewalk on 200 West between 5 and 600 North.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 11, invoices and purchase orders, presented by Shiloh Baker, the city recorder.
Thank you, council. Um, this evening, I have four invoices to present to you. The first is to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $56,000, excuse me, $56,056. Um, this is our annual renewal for the Tyler software, which is our financial and asset, um, accounting software. The second is to McCormick and Sons. This is the contractor who did the expansion on 200 West between 500 and 600 North. When they were finishing up, they realized they needed additional asphalt, and so this is for that asphalt. Um, that was just to make the road more uniform, whatever they had to do to, to the road, so that is in the amount of $38,114.25. We have an invoice to Rocky Mountain Powers. John already mentioned, we had all of the streetlights in the historic ma, Main Street, um, area painted, and that is in the amount of $42,900. And then an invoice to Broken Arrow for road salt for this winter. We're hoping we get some snow, and that's in the amount of $65,000.
I think the snow is coming, I hope.
I hope.
Soon.
Looking forward to it.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mr.?
Go ahead.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the invoices.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goachis and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shiloh. Item 12 are the minutes from the September 17th, 2025 business meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0, and we are adjourned at 8:11 p.m.